Good to be back at the Central Administration. I still call it Pine Street. You're not allowed to do that. Pursuant to the Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Laws in 1975, this meeting notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on September 30th, 2022, and has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue of October 6, 2022. All municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs within the Freehold Regional District has been duly notified, and the requirements of the posting have been met on September 30th. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to God and the United States of America, and to the good God who governs us, one nation, and under God, indivisible,天地 with justice and law.
Mr. Scott, do you have anything to add to the board agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Sorry. In addition to the items that were noted on the agenda that was printed prior to the meeting, the board also discussed the following additional items in executive session. For exception number three, the board did discuss a student residency appeal, and the board also did discuss student discipline matters. And also, for exception number seven, the board did not discuss the matter under docket number M O N L 002968, which was again on the agenda that was printed prior to the start of the meeting.
That's all?
Okay.
May I have a motion to approve the board agenda minutes from September 29th, 2022?
Second.
Any discussion? Brokaw?
Mrs. Capiella?
Yes.
Mrs. Hagley?
Yes.
Mrs. Laban?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses is absent. Mrs. Finale?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno is absent. Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Communications on file. The Board Secretary at Central Office. Dr. Sampson, are you ready for your report?
Let's do it. Thank you, Mr. Bruno. So we have a couple of presentations this evening, but we're going to open up with the members of the Student Executive Cabinet here. And I know Leila Senzig from Howell is going to be the first brave soul of those members to kick off their work within the school board. And just a little primer, the six of these individuals have had a couple of meetings with the Central Administration at this point in time. All participated in our strategic planning community event on October 6th, and will be running a number of focus groups and such throughout the buildings. But Leila, I'll turn it over to you, and thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education members, Dr. Sampson, Dr. Hazel, Mr. Boyce, and members of the community. My name is Leila Senzig, and I serve on the Executive Student Cabinet representing my school, Howell High School. The Executive Student Cabinet is a group of six senior representatives, one selected from each school in the district. We work as a team, meeting monthly with Dr. Sampson, Dr. Hazel, and the Central Office administrators, as a student focus group, and speak on behalf of our school. Each of us has a voice at the table, and we engage in discussion on various topics and share experiences from each of our schools. As an executive student cabinet, we look forward to playing an integral part in the strategic planning process for Compass 3.0 by lending our voices, providing feedback, and engaging in discussion with fellow students through focus groups. The six of us were able to kickstart the strategic planning process at the community meeting at Colts Neck High School, as each one of us explored one of the four focus areas of the plan: whole child, equity and opportunity, student growth and learning, and community partnerships. I personally worked with student growth and learning. It was such an exciting experience for each of us, and the fellow students in our groups truly felt connected and that our voices were being heard. We will continue to collaborate as a cabinet and with our schools to provide insights and feedback as we prepare for Compass 3.0. Throughout this school year, each student cabinet member will serve as a representative of the Board of Education. In this role, one executive student cabinet member will prepare an individual presentation for an upcoming Board of Education meeting. Our presentations will focus on the student experience and programs at each of our high schools. We feel these presentations will demonstrate to the greater community how the power of relationships, power of knowledge, and power of unity provides a stage for each student to be successful here in the Freehold Regional High School District. I would like to take a moment to introduce the cabinet members here with me tonight: Brielle Bravaco, Colts Neck High School; Samuel Rodriguez, Freehold High School, he's absent; Peyton Libros, Freehold Township High School; Luca DiAndrea, Manalapan High School; and Jovita Joseph, Marlboro High School. Luca will be the first student representative to present his school, Manalapan High School, at the November 17th Board of Education meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Leila. You want to come up and finish my report for me? Because you sound ready to roll. But thank you to all the members of the student cabinet for coming out this evening. And just so folks know, we had one person lined up, and Leila had volunteered or drew the short straw, I'm not sure which. But the other members, we had said, "You don't have to come," but they came anyway. So thank you. Appreciate that. So now, we will turn to the subject of assessment and testing, because student experience and assessment and testing in New Jersey go hand in hand, apparently, Mr. Hennecker, right? Sorry, that's sarcasm. But it's a little bit complicated, and I just want to preface some of the things that Mr. Hennecker has done a terrific job of putting the assessment report together for the year. This is obviously, everybody's reading right now that the NAEP scores have dropped and learning loss is at this critical juncture. We've experienced state testing in the Freehold Regional High School District over the past five or six years in a very different way. From the HESPA days to the transition to PARC, to now the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments, and so we've gone full circle. We went from an all-encompassing exam to PARC, where we were testing six or seven subject areas, to another all-encompassing exam. And it's been a bit difficult for us as a high school-only district, because some of those assessments don't count technically, right? And so encouraging students to do their best, put their best foot forward, and to make sure that we draw conclusions from that is a difficult process for us at times. But we have relied on things like the SAT, PSAT, ACT, tests of that nature, to give us some insight as well into what areas students are performing well in and where they may need some support. I got my own student's score reports last week in the mail. Not sure what they told me, but I appreciate that. I did get the scores. So, Mr. Hennecker, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, a few things. Say we're back to normal, like having to do an annual state assessment report for the board. But it's with my pleasure to present this. Again, my name is Bruce Hennecker. I'm the Director of Planning, Research, and Evaluation. Of course, it worked before. Okay. So, due to COVID-19 executive orders exempting requirement to administer state assessments in 2019, 20, and 2020, 2021, this is the first time we've been required to present the full annual assessment report in two years. New for the 2021-2022 school year was the addition of the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, or the NJGPA. However, for students in the class of 2023, those students who took this assessment last year, this test is not a graduation requirement. Rather, this test was considered a field test. Except for students who are exempt from taking the NJGPA, for example, students taking the Dynamic Learning Math Assessment, students in the class of 2024 and 2025 will be required to take this assessment as the first pathway option to meet the graduation assessment requirement. All state assessments are aligned to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. As a result, Freehold Regional is very intentional to align the school goals and standards-based planning and instruction to the NJSLS. Likewise, though the state assessments are required to be administered, Freehold Regional uses these assessments for a variety of purposes, including informing our understanding of strengths and areas of growth in curriculum and instruction, and for program planning, such as professional development, the acquisition of instructional resources, and identification of appropriate student-level interventions. To ensure student success on these assessments, a variety of intervention strategies are used, including the use of integrated formative and summative assessments, for example, RTCA's, and the use of a variety of targeted interventions, pull-out support during the school day, in-person and virtual tutoring, and Title I and Title III summer programming. The first set of results we will examine will be for the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments for ELA and Math. There are five performance levels, with student scoring at levels four and five being considered proficient. This slide shows the performance of Grade 9 students who took the ELA 09 NJSLA assessment. Results are broken down by gender, race, ethnicity, and other demographic categories. Overall, in the upper right, 56.5% of the students scored in the proficient range. This slide shows the performance of those students who were enrolled in geometry. Geometry is now the first course in the three-course sequence of geometry, Algebra 1, and Algebra 2. Overall, the proficiency level for all students taking the NJSLA geometry assessment is 35.7%. This slide shows the performance of those students who were enrolled in Algebra 1. Overall, the proficiency level for all students taking the NJSLA Algebra 1 assessment is 31.3%. It should be noted that only those students who did not take the NJSLA Algebra 1 in middle school sit for this assessment. This slide shows the performance of those students who were enrolled in Algebra 2. Overall, the proficiency level for all students taking the NJSLA Algebra 2 assessment is 54.2%, considerably higher than in geometry or Algebra 1. This demonstrates, in part, the benefits students gain the longer they are enrolled in Freehold Regional Schools. In addition to the NJSLA ELA and Math assessments, certain students were also required to take the NJSLA Science. Only juniors are required to take this assessment. Unlike the NJSLA ELA and Math assessments, Science only has four proficiency levels, with levels three and four being considered proficient. This slide shows the performance of those students who took the NJLA Science. Overall, the proficiency level for all students taking the NJSLA Science assessment is 29.3%.
Mr. Hennecker, I'm going to interrupt you for a minute, because people are hearing 29% and probably freaking out, so I'm going to put some context to that. So, the Science assessment is given to juniors who show up to take it. It doesn't count for anything, and so when you're hearing that number, this is a mandatory assessment that kids sit for. I'm not quite sure what powers we have to persuade students to engage in that test in a more aggressive fashion, but we don't. And so those numbers appear very, very low, but it is a... Well, I'm not going to speak... It's a one-off test that students are not required to pass or score any numbers on during the day. And I think that's important context, and I think some of those percentages are important context as well. The difficulty we have faced as an organization, and I'm guilty of it myself for even my sarcastic comments about standardized testing, is when some of these assessments don't count, it's difficult to make sure that we're doing the most effective way that we can. But we also have to balance that with the responsibility that we have to prepare our students for gateway assessments into post-secondary life, right? Like SAT, PSAT, ACT. Correct. It's federally legislated, and New Jersey's never got it out, and so many kids don't bother to come that day to even take the assessment, because they know. However, I will say, we understand that balance, and I can talk from my own child, who is in the college process and trying to play at the university level. The first question she was being asked to send were her transcripts of her SAT scores, even though schools are test optional and the such, right? So, sorry to interrupt, Mr. Hennecker, but I don't want people hearing 29% and jumping off the ledge and thinking that that's how our students perform here.
Agreed. Okay. In March 2022, we administered the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, or the NJGPA, and ELA and Math for the first time. Though it was originally to be used as the first pathway for meeting the graduation assessment requirement, this was changed by executive order. Instead, the March 2022 NJGPA is being considered a field test. Students in the class of 2023 are not impacted by their performance on this assessment. Rather, the data we are presenting is for informational purposes only. Before we show the results of the Spring 2022 NJGPA, which has been clarified to now be a field test and not to be used to determine the graduation readiness of the class of 2023, it is important to provide context regarding what it means to be graduation-ready at Freehold Regional. This slide shows the four-year and five-year graduation rates. These are the official graduation rates as reported by the state. As we can see, we consistently graduate over 95% of all students using the four-year rate. This does not include those students who are able to attend Freehold Regional Schools for an additional year due to IEP. When taking that into consideration, the five-year rate is consistently above 97%. Alternatively, we could also see how Freehold Regional students perform on the graduation assessments prior to the introduction of the NJGPA. Previously, the first pathway was to pass the NJSLA Grade 10 ELA and the NJSLA Algebra 1 with an appropriate cut score, which was a score of 750 out of 800. The second pathway would be to score an appropriate cut score on a range of substitute competency tests. These include other NJSLA assessments, SAT, ACT, PSAT, Accuplacer, and/or the ASVAB AFQT. The third pathway would be to demonstrate proficiency in ELA and/or Math through a portfolio review. This is essentially an opportunity for students to demonstrate they know and understand the essential skills in these subject areas to be considered college and career-ready. Based on data currently available, over 90% of Freehold Regional students met the graduation assessment requirements via the first and second pathway. The class of 2023 will not need to meet any of the pathways to graduate this year, as they were waived by executive order. Unlike the NJSLA for ELA and Math, that has five levels of performance, and the NJSLA Science that has four levels of performance, for the NJGPA, there are only two levels: not yet graduation-ready and graduation-ready. Overall, of the juniors who took the NJGPA for Math, 59.7% scored at the graduation-ready level, and 48.4% of juniors who took the NJGPA for ELA were considered graduation-ready on this field test. To be clear, these results are not at all indicative of graduation cohort 2023's readiness for college and career. Freehold Regional High School District student performance on prior iterations of the NJSLA, the first and second pathway performance, and graduation rates over time clearly demonstrates that the results of the Spring 2022 NJGPA are inaccurate at best. Disregarding the validity of the NJGPA field test, this slide shows the comparative performance on the NJGPA between Freehold Regional and the state. For ELA, we outperformed the state by 9%. For Math, we outperformed the state by 10%. In addition to the NJSLA and the NJGPA, the Access for Ls 2.0 is a required assessment. This test is taken only by students considered to be English learners. This test also determines if a student has met the exit criteria, which is performing at a level of 4.5 or higher on a six-point scale. This slide describes in more detail each performance level on the Access for Ls 2.0. Again, students scoring between expanding, which is level four, and bridging, which is level five, are considered eligible to exit status. Students who exit status are considered fluent enough where additional language support are not required. This chart shows the count of students whose overall score fell into each scoring range. What's not shown in the summary data is that of the 150 students who tested, eight students scored at 4.5 or higher. In 2020 and 2021, the count of students at 4.5 or higher was four out of 90 students tested. These charts show the overall performance broken down by grade level. Of the nine seniors scoring at level four, five scored 4.5 or above. The Dynamic Learning Maps, or DLM, is taken by those students whose IEP indicates they are exempt from taking the NJSLA assessments. The DLM serves as an alternative assessment, but student performance is still used for accountability purposes. Currently, DLM score summaries at the state level are not yet available. For this comparison, state data is from 2020-2021, whereas Freehold Regional data is from 2021-2022. In all categories, Freehold Regional students outperformed the state based on available data. Testing will proceed as expected this year. Though we did administer the full 2022 Start Strong Assessment in September, the final results are not yet available. A detailed schedule of all state testing that will take place this year is available on the district website at the link provided. I want to thank you for your attention to this presentation, and I look forward to additional ones in the future.
I have one question for you.
Yes.
So, even though we're using the word "field test" for some of this information?
Yeah.
Do we do anything with this for our curriculum? Do we look at some of the results and say, "Well, 29%. We can't really tell why that is." But do we change our curriculum?
So, the... I want to take that. So, the Science test, we do nothing with, almost, because it's a federal mandate. It gives us very little information. Kids don't come in... The kids know that it's... But we're in a difficult position, right? Because you're taking a federally mandated assessment, and you want the kids to do well, but it's very difficult for us to glean any real actionable data from that particular assessment. The field test, we'll see, they just changed the test, right? So, the difficulty that we faced is, as I said earlier, we went from HESPA to PARC to the NJSLA. This is now a field test. The state caught us all off-guard last week, when we didn't know that the letters going home were going to say "not graduation-ready" off of a field test, right? So, many of us argued that that was going to cause panic to parents who didn't understand that this was a field test that had not been normed, that makes it more difficult for us to draw some conclusions from, yet you were going to send home to somewhere close to 60% of the parents in the state whose kids were going to graduate in the spring that they were not yet graduation-ready. So, that's... Mr. Hennecker did a nice job of pointing out that those numbers didn't jive for us in terms of some of the other assessments that kids take. But all of these are data points, right? And I think it's important to note, we have seen some trends over time in some subject areas that play out in some of these assessments, whether that's with Algebra 2 or geometry, but there are a lot of variables to it, right? So, we're a high school-only district. Students... And they're changing this with some of the testing, but typically, students are accelerated in math by eighth grade, they're taking some of these assessments. When they move into ninth grade... So, ninth grade, our ELA numbers are all of our ninth graders, but the ninth grade, depending if it's geometry, for instance, now for us, those are students who are at grade level or below with mathematics. The other students have already taken that test, so they're not reflected in those numbers. They're reflected in the K8 numbers. So, it makes it a little bit difficult to draw some conclusions. But I do... I go back to our responsibility to prepare students to be able to manage these assessments, especially as they relate to being gateway assessments for something else. And several years ago, we realized that a number of the universities, if you did not have Algebra 2, you were effectively blocked from getting into a particular university. And so, kids might have been taking statistics instead, and we've adjusted what we do there. This district gives the PSAT, uses the SAT. We certainly look at... We draw some conclusions from that data to inform what we're doing with our curriculum. It starts, as Mr. Hennecker noted, with the NJSLA standards, right? The state standards, that's where we start from, and we build out from there. But the disruption has been difficult for us to draw real conclusions from, because on top of the COVID disruption, the tests have changed. And so, that inconsistency is very difficult for us to get a grasp of what is accurate and what is not. Somebody, a friend of mine, Chris Tinkin, who researches all this, will tell you these tests have a plus-minus of eight points either way. So, when you're drawing a hard cutoff, that's a long swing, right? What you think is a 750 could be a 742, or it could be...
State cutoffs.
Correct. So, but we do look at trends in certain questions and things like that, and content that kids may disproportionately struggle on, that will pop to us in looking at this, right? So, Mr. Hennecker actually did a good job of correlating some of this to Start Strong in terms of what was the correlation, and is there anything? So, we spent an awful lot of time trying to parse this out to make some meaning for what we can do to move forward. And it's a difficult place to be in when some of these assessments don't count, and the students know that, and we've got to prepare them as effectively as possible. But the long-winded answer, Mr. Bruno, is yes, we do look for trends in these state assessments, and we do have a responsibility to make sure that our students perform well on standardized assessments. It's a gateway, right? Whether schools say they're test-optional or not, I can tell you, anybody if they're looking to... They might say, "Our school is test-optional," but if you want to be in our honors program, by the way, you need a 1,300 on your SAT, right? But we're test-optional, right? So, that's prevalent, and we know that, right? So, I don't think higher ed is changing anytime soon with some of that, and so we feel we certainly have a responsibility. But the present context with COVID and a new test is very difficult for us to draw real conclusions from.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you for, thank you for the presentation and the information. What I'm gleaning about all this is that it's, it's hard to ascertain the level of motivation and effort from the students that are taking these tests. Is, is that essentially what is kind of underlying this?
It is, but, but I, I will say something, you know, um, so in my previous district, one of the, one of the issues was that the, in those days, it was the HESPA, right? And, and the argument from a lot of the parents at the time was, you know, look, this test, these kids don't take this test seriously. Uh, but what we were able to do in that, in that district was to show a correlation between the HESPA scores and the SAT scores of those students where they were taking the test seriously and that they were trying. And so that there was, there was more of an issue to make sure that we had to improve what was going on for those students to perform on. Now then, the HESPA went away, right? And, and then we had PARK for several years, which was frankly, an unmitigated disaster. Um, and we, we navigated through that, but what you had was, we, we have a circumstance in our high schools now where students are test fatigued from things that do and don't count. And I think that many of the students certainly pay more attention to those college entrance assessments than they do some of the state assessments at the high school level, especially if they're a particular subject that a student knows they do not have to pass. That being said, um, we're always working to get a handle over what are these expectations? Because we want our students positioned in the best possible light to do well regardless, right? Like, so, um, you know, and it comes from, you know, I've, I've, you know, for twelve years, I've, I've railed on the state about some of their practices with assessment, and, you know, sometimes folks tell me I do that too much, and maybe that even lends to the district saying these aren't, you know, but, um, it's, it's a reality. The tests have changed three times in, in five or six years at this point in time. And some of them have counted and others haven't. And we have a field test where the state has the gall to say not yet graduation ready on a field test and mail that home to parents. So it puts us in a tough spot.
And when the state has pathways that students can graduate through, and our students are taking the PSAT in their early years, meeting the CUP score.
That's it.
They already, they already.
That's one of the pathways, yeah.
Their graduation requirement. So therefore, it is, it is very challenging as a school district, especially across a high-performance school district where students are doing very well on those assessments, you know, to have this in the fold of it because the kids have already.
Hard to get in sight.
They've already made it through.
Yeah, yeah.
They've made it through one of the tests.
Well, but, and, and that's, look, we, we face, so Mr. Henneker also went through the graduation rates, right? So the state has a five-year cohort. We have a hundred and twenty students who take six years to graduate here because they're, they have IEPs that provide for that, and we educate them for six years. They're lost in that number. They count against us, right? Even though we have programs that support those students. It's the same thing with the state assessment. If we were a K-12 scope, you would get a, you know, you would get a more sort of linear understanding of how well students did before things parse out and they're taking assessments that do and don't count because in, when you're sitting down and taking the sixth-grade NJSLA, those kids are all sitting in the same sixth grade taking that test, and, you know, it's, it's just a very different ball of wax, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We do have a, um, curriculum report tonight. We met today, and, um, Lucy, Lucy, don't count if you do that report.
First, we started off with the International Baccalaureate Program, and it's thriving. Creole Township just finished its five-year review, and I think HOW will be going into its five-year review. And when I went to find out about IB initially, maybe ten years ago, they said to expect twenty percent of their students to get diploma the first couple of years. And we've just blown those programs up and continuing to do. I mean, HOW last year had seventy-one percent of its students earning diploma, and Township had sixty percent. So we're way above the curve of the kids and the scholarships they get. It's just amazing. So it's been a very successful program. It's thriving in the district. And, and HOW, only students from HOW can go to Creole Township that don't get Creole Township fees and others from throughout the district. Also, they're going through the program review process after a curriculum is written and is implemented. The next year, the teachers get together and review what worked, what didn't work. And they're constantly tweaking it, and I think that's what makes our district so special, that they're always improving the better. This year, they're going to be working on some, um, business, um, accounting, marketing, and reviewing about seven other curriculums, some social studies, peer leadership, which haven't been looked at in a long time. So it's good to just, we've done all the main courses of the curriculum through our elective programs. School goals, they're continuing really working towards our school goals, standard-aligned assessments, they're working towards getting more formative assessments where teachers working together and writing unit tests together. Teachers aren't forced to use those unit tests, but they can look at it and then base their test on it. So this way, students are being graded on an equal platform and at the same level so that one teacher's easy, the other teacher's hard, and the kids are really getting the same curriculum and being graded fairly because the assessment took it. And I think that's something that they've been working really hard in the curriculum department. But it takes time because the teachers have to buy in, they write the test, and they feel part of it, and I think that's been really successful. Maggot programs, the timeline's up. They're going around this week and last week having the different open houses, and the tests will start in, um, I believe, December. They'll be testing, and then you'll have in January, FPAC, and we'll be having their auditions. ROTC will be having their interviews, and that's already on its way for next year, and they're having a lot of success with people coming out for those, so that's been really. One of the things that we're really proud of is our pathways programs. The students are in the learning centers, we have the pathways. We have the web design and the health profession. The web design is at Creole Township at Creole High School, and I can't believe that that it's year seven for that band for Creole Borough, and I think it's year, um, three at, or four at Township. And then we have, and now it's at Marlboro High School also for the last three years. And then the health profession's at Creole High School in Monalupon. And just gives students a lot of, um, hands-on, they get college credit when they're advanced classes, and it really gives students another way to go out, get internships, and do different things, find different things of interest for them. And we're having a brand-new one we'll be working on that we're running for, and we were selected for cybersecurity pathways. Not coding, it's, um, so it's not like computer science, but so it's, um, but it's, that's something new that we'll be working on, and I think we will want, what, seven or ten?
Ten.
Districts in the country to get funding for that. So it's going to be a national identity. It's a lot of different areas where you can get information, curriculum, so I think that's very exciting for the district. SAT prep, I think it's excellent. They're offering the SAT prep based on feedback instead of having three weeks with two hours placed a week. The students felt that that was really too difficult for them during the school year, which I guess it's going to be extended over eight weeks and an hour and a half, um, for each session for the two times. So I think that's much more manageable. Not only the students, but also the teachers teaching, you know, so that's something. And this year, we don't have a grant program, but because of the high number of students taking it, and it's offered both after-school and virtually, so it needs students who are Bob Melville activities can take advantage of it. So that means there'd be a hundred hours for the whole SAT course that they're taking. That's not even worth the pay for one hour with an outside person. So this is a really great opportunity, and I hope parents and students take advantage of it. So very excited, we're doing great.
Thank you. Thank you very much. There was no public participation tonight. Mr. Boyce, are there changes to the agenda?
I do have a few, and Mr. Toscano will also add a few after I run through these. These are additions to the agenda, two of which are on yellow paper in the back of the room, but I'll read them into the record. An additional name on G2, approval of retirements. John Maniachi, music teacher in Monalupon High School, effective June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, after twenty-five years of service. Also on J5, approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year professional learning support team. Please add the name Paul Riordan as a PLC coach from Creole Township in the science area at stipend of one thousand. In addition, I1 on the agenda left space for proposals that we received last week for a transportation study. We've had the chance to go through those proposals and evaluate them, and I'd like to offer the following resolution in that space. This is I1. Be resolved that in accordance with New Jersey Public Schools contract law, the Creole Regional High School District Board of Education awards a contract to Ross Haber and Associates, LLC to perform a transportation study for the district in the amount of fifty-nine thousand dollars. The contract is being awarded based on being most advantageous to the district, price and other factors considered, as per the proposal submitted in response to the district's RFP transportation study for submission October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two. So those are my three items. Mr. Toscano?
I have, I have two additional items to add to the agenda. The first will be item J seventeen. Excuse me, and it's a motion to approve a tuition agreement with the Latham School. Uh, the second one is going to be J eighteen. Uh, it will be a motion to deny the student residency appeal as discussed in executive
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to take, um, G Personnel and Negotiations, G one through G eleven?
Loten?
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes, but it's staying to G six, I have to Matthew Colson.
Mrs. Lavine?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Spennelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes, and I have staying from Cole Cameron. Thank you. Now, let's take Programs Operations, Building, Transportation, and Physical Plan. I have a motion to take H one through I six.
Motion.
Mrs. Lavine?
Second.
Mrs. Capiello? Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. I have a roll call.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes, on everything except for H four, staying to Dr. Sampson.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes, on everything, but on H four, staying to Dr. Sampson, Matthew Verdoni, and Michael Vazan.
Mrs. Lavine?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Spennelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
We're going to take Educational Programs and Administration, J one through K two. Might have a motion. Mrs. Capiello?
Second.
Mrs. Higley? Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes, on everything except on K one, I have staying to Dr. Sampson.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes, except on K one, I have staying to Dr. Sampson.
Mrs. Lavine?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Spennelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Motion, please.
Thank you. Any old business to discuss tonight? Any old business? I just want to say that I attended the, um, Freehold Regional Band Festival at Monalupon High School. Fantastic night. We had a great night. Um, the bands were awesome. The Doors performance was my favorite, but, um, it was great. It was a really good night, and, um, very cool Dunkin' Donuts. A little inside joke, but it was a great night, so thank you for putting that on.
I have one, a couple of things to, it just, uh, we'll, we'll recognize the spooktacular winners on November board meeting. That was an awesome day as well, and, and, uh, the district, um, you know, congrats to Ms. Paula Castro because the district received, um, several awards from the New Jersey School Professional Relations Communications Organization in terms of our communication, our social media presence and things like that. So, uh, congrats. It was a nice honor down at, uh, school boards last week, uh, earlier this week.
Any, any more old business? Um, new business? Any board members have new businesses?
Mr. Bruno, can I give a school board update?
Sure.
All right. Uh, I just want to thank, uh, all the board members and administrators that came down earlier this week. As Dr. Sampson just alluded, New Jersey School Board Association has their annual workshop. Uh, they, it was this, uh, this week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, down in Atlantic City. There was thousands of board members, administrators, you name it, vendors, every, everybody was down there workshopping, and, um, as you can imagine, over, after the last few years, uh, they did not have a, an in-person workshop in twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one. So this was the first in-person workshop in the last three years, and I think it was really nice for everyone to be back together, uh, doing this in person, and it was an enjoyable experience. And, um, that said, I do want to, uh, since we have our student board members here tonight, I was looking for something, uh, from New Jersey School Board Association that they may enjoy hearing. So, um, uh, the, the School Board Association announced, uh, this year's School Board Member of the Year, and it, this gentleman has a pretty interesting story that I think our, our junior, uh, student board members might find inspiring. So I just wanted to just read a little bit of that. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but enough of it so you can get the gist. Uh, each year since two thousand and five, the New Jersey School Board Association has honored a local Board of Education member who makes significant contributions to public education, exemplifies leadership in the field of education with a strong commitment to the children of New Jersey, demonstrates a strong commitment to their own personal and professional development as a board member, and shows active involvement on school governance at the local county and state levels. This, this year's New Jersey Board Member of the Year is Adam Parkinson, President of the West New York Board of Education in Hudson County. Parkinson's service to education began when he was appointed to the West New York Board of Education at eighteen years old. At age twenty, he was elected president of the board. He is the youngest person of record in New Jersey state history to have achieved this distinction. Under his leadership, the district has achieved certification by the Commissioner of Education as a quote "high-performing district," end quote, received an award for energy stewardship, and was designated a future-ready school from early childhood to high school. On the state level, as if that wasn't enough, Parkinson serves as the president of the Hudson County School Boards Association, participates in the New Jersey School Board Association's delegate assemblies, and serves on the association's legislative committees. He has been designated a certified board leader by the New Jersey School Board Association, the highest designation in the board member academy for individual board members. His dedication to public education extends to his professional career as well. A former teacher at Weehawken High School, he is currently coordinator of the P to twelve academic programs and student achievement for Weehawken Township School District. So obviously, this is a very bright young man who has, you know, parlayed his experience, you know, as a student into serving his community and serving on the board in many different capacities, and certainly that possibility is available to all, all of you that are, are now our student board members. So hopefully, you've been a little bit inspired by that to continue to do what you do.
Thank, thank you. Anything else? Anybody else want to do? I just want to say, um, we kicked off October sixth strategic planning. Many of you were there at Coltonak and, um, lots of Hazel, her group, administration did a great job. It's definitely my favorite, um, evening, and there's another one coming up in February, so it's very important to the district, and everybody who volunteered, and it was a great night, learned a lot. And it was short, short and sweet. It was home by eight. Very great. And then just one extra thing, Louise Delisala, uh, the principal, the assistant, the principal secretary, executive secretary at Monalupon, she's retiring, close friend, she's seen a lot of principals come and go there, but, um, she's a great lady. I wish her a lot of luck and help, I mean, her retirement. Anybody else with new business? Okay. We're going to, um, have a motion to adjourn.
Heshi's not here.
Heshi's not here.
I'll make the motion.
Go ahead, go.
All right.
You're not as fast as he was, but that's okay. Second?
Lavine.
Mrs. Lavine? Not hearing any. You need to adjourn.
No one's opposed.
All favor.
Hi.
Bye.
I don't vote, but okay.